... permit to get going, that's it. And I think that's in the final hours, may even be received this week. If it is, we're gonna set up, try to give you at least a week's warning to do a groundbreaking, where we get out there with shovels and have a formal groundbreaking on that. So it's very close. But Spark and Hilton have a design package, they call it a mural, and they wanted me to go look. I went over and took these pictures, this is off Briarwood. You see the left side of that building, the stripes and the yellows and purples and blues and all that kind of stuff. Roy wanted me to ask you if we would consider allowing them to paint that mural on this spark. Kind of grimaced a little bit, and I said, "Well, I will ask." I can tell you that the professional opinions that we had with Jamie Ware and Sam here, they argued up in sound all around, and finally said, "No, we're not gonna allow that look of a mural." So they painted it on the ceiling in the foyer when you drive through. Be kinda interested to know, and Sam would like to know what your thoughts are of something painted like that. And I'm sure you've probably got a couple of renderings they probably gave us that I should've gotten from you to plug in here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, so I don't know how you feel about something that looks like that there at the interstate. Your screen's not working, Lou? Oh, wow, okay. So anyway, you get off on Briarwood and drive, it's right there by Chili's, you can't miss it, if you want to ride over and look at it and see how it looks in the street. That's Hilton. All right, tourism, catch you up on a couple of these things right quick. Had a great concert, sold-out concert, had a great Oktoberfest, as far as I know, had a wood carver down there that was doing a great job, he's gonna be carving some things for us. And we have youth sports out there, so Jennifer says, she reported too many today, we had 24 teams at Grand Slam at the Quarry, 25 teams at USA Softball out in Shiloh, an estimated total of 11,000, it's 3,500 people, so a big weekend for us. And Magical Light showed up last week and we began building it. So all these kids are gonna see flying deer this year, I think there're gonna be three tunnels in this thing, be a patriotic tunnel and enchanted tunnel, and there's gonna be free sound of pictures and that kind of thing, so it's shaping up to be a really good thing. So we're rocking and rolling out there, beginning to assemble that. Parade, we did come up with, this is something that Kendall came up with, Goza, and we're gonna begin a logo and begin to promote this in downtown for December 13th. Proud of the Mayor's Youth Council for doing that. We had a conversation last time, Dwight brought it up, about barricades or bike racks, we wanna use bike racks downtown, so if you do, get up there and look, that's 5,600 feet to go from the middle school all the way down to Lewis Wilson, if you did both sides. If you did both sides of that, you're coming up with a little bit over a mile, so it's a half mile of road, so if you divide that by eight, which is the width of a bike rack, you come up with 650 bike racks. Now, I'm not gonna recommend to you that we do that and make a tunnel all the way down through there, but there's gotta be some improvement over what we've got. So we can buy a few of these along, did an inventory count, we've got 114 of those bike racks right now. We began to change some of them in the amphitheater and go with flat feet because they were a trip hazard when people went down into the pit or out in line, ticket line, trying to get in a gate, created problems, and so we just break them out as flat legs and raised legs. And I would say, let's buy a 20-foot trailer, I thought I had two quotes, and Mark has looked at those, said they don't match, so we're gonna have to take that off the agenda, but you can tell me to keep moving forward if you like this idea. And let's just go ahead and buy 100 bike racks and use them appropriately with the 48 that we have, that would give us 150, and buy a trailer that we can store them on, it's a lot of labor-intensive, putting them on, taking them off, putting them on, taking them off, so I'd say we need to get a couple of trailers and just load it up with bike racks, and we can use them whenever we're gonna need them. So getting to where we have three or four parades a year, a big thing, and we just need to begin, just like buying light plants, we need to have stuff to do, the stuff we're gonna do with, whether it be gumbo cook-offs, whether it be Mardi Gras parades, whether it be street dances or whatever. So I kinda like where you think and say, "Yeah, get 100, you know, let's work toward that, get a trailer, store, get a couple of trailers, store them on." We looked at a couple of trailer packages, a 20-foot trailer, and then stack them in there, two rows, no deal. So that's $6, $6,500 a pop, and $100 a piece for bike racks, basically, is what it's gonna cost you. So I'd like some feedback from you, if that's what we think we ought to do. Won't be able to go the whole way, but we can hit the bad part, and we can put, we can, I think I'm thinking along lines of putting Mayor's Youth Council and other adults in the gap, so we can spread them out and put a person standing there to make sure nobody gets out in the street and that kind of thing. All right? Sunchase. Lost a week from a hurricane, didn't want to get started, I'm glad I didn't because it had turned into a muddy mess. To allow them to make up for that week, we agreed, Matthew kinda needled me a little bit, I didn't push back that hard, but to combine one and three into one long lane down through there, and then come back and do the front of Briar's Bend, and then finish up with the other side of Windchase. The reason why that's more complicated is because you're replacing some good bit of curb and some driveways there, that first lay of concrete, so it's gonna be invasive. And another problem, then we had another rain and turned it up and hold. Then we found, I showed you, we had, which is just mud, 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 and by the way, Jared the, out at the edge of the highway, Dale Street is breaking down, so we're gonna try to pave it too, all the way out to where it was, so all the way through there, we'll see how far our money goes. But then exposed electrical line, had to get energy out there for that, and got back to rolling, and they got the line in, and I'm thinking, Matthew, that probably the base course will be down in the next couple of days.
On that side?
All right, so the curb guy's gonna start on the north side, yeah. So the current, that's concrete, so all that'll start, they'll put the base down, that'll leave a, something about like this, drop from old asphalt to new asphalt, because they're gonna do it all at the same time, so it's nice and smooth. And again, it's just a problem going into places, no different than Music Well Road was, or Glen Arm or anywhere else where you're going in and taking all that bad out and doing it right. Trees?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So I've been out there a lot since this project been going on, getting called out there a lot, I just have questions on the trash pickup, the mailbox is being hit, I wish people would slow down and just ride through there, and so one more thing, I had a question.
One-way signs.
The one-way signs, yes.
Yeah, they weren't following their traffic plan, I was standing there one day and a car came off of 18, and a car's coming this way, and this one has to wait because they can't, it's just difficult. So really, need to close these, I talked to Matthew about it today, to go back to the original traffic plan and get some road closed signs up, so you can't come out and go in one way or the other. Or have enough flagmen down there to take care of it. We knew it was gonna be a problem. Next problem you're gonna get, next thing you're gonna hear about is dust on cars and those kind of things, and then I, you know, I'm getting burned up too, I'm getting burned up by people that say, "You know, I work at night, how can, how can I, I mean, I work during the day and da-da-da-da-da, you know, how can I, how can I sleep when I, during the day if I work at night?" I don't know how you answer those kind of questions. Do you not want your street fixed, right? You know, it's just always gonna be something, people, and we're dealing with people and situations, and it's just fun and games, kind of thing. It's all serious now, missed garbage one day, and I was standing there when that garbage truck came around, came up here, stopped, and they backed up and they left, and I said, "Well, they're going around the block." And they never came back around the block, you know? So I had to call Waste Management and say, "David, this ain't gonna cut it, da-da-da-da-da." So that happened just one time that I'm aware of, and I need to know if it's happened again, okay? Please.
So on the barrels, the orange barrels, can we move those closer to the mailboxes that are being hit? It's only four of them being hit.
You know who's hitting them?
I'm not sure.
Residents.
Oh, yeah, for sure, bud.
But they're gonna wind, they know that, Matthew knows that, I'm down there, the mirror's laying on the ground, they're just driving too fast through a construction zone. And I stood there and gave out 150 of those flyers and asked people to go around, slow down, da-da-da-da-da, and it's just not gonna do it. I think I count five or six that have been hit, bent, and they're just zipping down through there. Part of, it's not a, not that they shouldn't have done what I'm about to tell you, but the road is, how wide, Matthew? And they cut out the first 11 feet, so the second half of it is gonna be smaller, narrower, so this road, but I can't, you can't outthink people, man, I'm just telling you. So I know one of their trucks hit one of those, but I think the rest of them have been hit by residents that live there, which is messing up both their vehicle and the mailbox that they hit. I'd get you, everything?
Well, I'll send y'all to that addresses, I'm just asking if we can move the cones from one side of the road to kinda block those mailboxes.
Well, if you, if you put barrels on the mailbox side, you wouldn't have enough room to drive a car through there, between where the barrels are, because the lane they cut out over here is 11 feet, it comes past the middle lane. So try anything though, Matthew?
I'm just asking if I could add a cone to the mailbox. It would be out in the trees if you make sure it's not falling.
Yes, thanks.
I'd put it in front of the mailbox.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And then it'll be Briar's Bend, and then it'll be Windsong, so you won't be doing that whole stretch again. All right, trees, trees, trees. The last thing that you approved, we're halfway through this Saturday, talked to Chief this morning, and they wanted to close down Value Road, I said, "No, can't close down Value Road, we'll close one lane, put one police officer on one end, one police officer on the other end, and put two flagmen out there to try to control it." So we'll have flagmen there, and we'll support this anyway, but we can't close that street. They got, I think, nine trees to take down on Value Road, scattered all over the city. Now, as I ride, I still see, I'm making a next list, but I don't wanna put the next one out for bid because it'll be just that much longer again, I'd rather wait till they're getting a little bit close to the end. So perhaps I can get done with it and have it on the agenda for you to look at by the next board meeting, which would be the fourth one. And again, there's no emergency declaration out there, there is no money coming, but if we don't track what we spend on this, there's no hope of getting any money back, if a declaration is ever made. And we're doing it. Getting questions now, this, these next two are off of Fawn Wood, this is not anywhere close to any city property right of way, or easement or anything else, but this is in the back of houses, and people are getting upset because nobody's taking the trees down. I think both, both of these, I'm gonna show you, are on Mr. Underwood's property, or at the edge of it, might even be on these property owners' property line, I don't know where the property line's at. Could be on the power line, could be in their backyard, and they just want somebody to take the tree down. It's all over the city, it's just, can't find people to go to work. I had a lady in here, two board meetings back, you wouldn't remember her, but she had a legal pad with 17 different tree cutters that she couldn't get to come to her house to take one pine tree down. They got all the work in the world. And it's still that way, and it's gonna be that way for a while. All right? Again, they'll start at 8:00 a.m., so Chief, you need to be out there getting ready at 7:30, please, and we need to make opportunity to do that. Two of those are dead, bunch of them leaning over, half of them crippled, and we just need to clean that up as we're going. Ran this to the insurance department through Sharon here one day, had a homeowner that got a nasty letter from Safeco, "We're canceling your automobile and homeowners insurance." And we all around here looked at each other and go, "What? Is that legal?" And it was because of that dead limb you see in that picture, I went and took that picture, that is on the adjoining property owner's property. That's an outbuilding, that's not the house, the house is in front of that, but they were canceling that policy because they feared that limb was gonna come down and hit that outbuilding and be an insurance claim on them, and low and behold, it's legit. Because as I talk to tree cutters, they're doing a lot of these, so there are a lot of insurance companies beginning to do this. So I don't know if that's gonna be something that's gonna be prevalent, that you're gonna hear more about, but here's a case where there's the letter, and I said, "I gotta see it to believe it." Here's the letter, I believe it, kind of deal. So went to insurance department, said, "I'll get an answer right back to you." Well, it took about three or four hours, but we got the answer back, that it is legit. So if you hear about it, there's some truth to it. Who's, who's their insurance carrier?
Okay.
All right, well, there's, there's two, yeah, so I suspect you're gonna get more and more of that, not less and less of it. Was that what, Harry, was that in their yard? Was a tree in their yard?
What they did, so insurance backed them up with them, and so they cleaned the tree up, you know, a lot of limbs, a lot of limbs, so over the house, kind of pulled back, and they said, "They'll extend them another year," and it's a little review again.
Well, the companies are flying drones over them, is what they're doing, and if you can, a lot of them are working with you, as long as you can take pictures once it's been rectified, once you've corrected the problem, then they will relook at it, but that's what they're doing right now, because, because we got.
Problem's not going away anytime soon. This is the type thing that Public Works deals with, this is a message that came from ProTel to us on the left side of that screen, one of your contractors in the area states there is smoke, chemicals all in the air, and he can't breathe, he's headed to the hospital, and he's calling his attorney, and da-da-da-da-da, no one's hearing it, so. So I've sat here and expressed to you, and so has Matthew, what a CIP cure-in-place pipe is all about, that's a couple of pictures before, and I've, y'all seen this before, least expensive way to rehab pipes of any kind, we're particularly using it for sewer here. So went and knocked on the door, nobody came to the door, so automatically think, well, yeah, they're going to the hospital. Well, they just wouldn't come to the door, because 30 minutes later went and knocked on the door again because they saw lights on when it got after dark, and they were eating supper. So it's just one of these idle threats, that everything goes stop, you gotta go figure it out, and you know, best you're trying to do the right thing for people, and they still, they come after you in every which way, shape, form, fashion. This is on Pearl Street, just to give you another idea, this, we've still got clay pipe around here, this is one location where it's at, we'll have to get to fixing all that, that whole top's about to break in on that. Some of the oldest stuff in the city, some other ARPA projects, water lines going up Burnham Road, I think everything's clicking along, I haven't heard of any problems other than traffic driving too fast when they go by them. This is a big improvement, it goes up to a main, it goes all the way over to the cane circle tank, so basically you're gritting off and looping the northeast part of the city, and it should really increase, already getting rid of the booster pump, which is a great thing, it won't have to run anymore, get it out of the system, and Stonehenge should have better water pressure up there, and everybody else should too. So glad that's going on, I don't know the progress, I wouldn't think they might be through, Matthew, or they, yeah, they just getting started. Highway 18 down there and 468, I don't know, I'd have to do the math again, it's probably more than four, four and a half million dollars is what's been spent down there, in three phases, if you would, phase one, phase two, and phase three, going under 18 and under 468. They've got one more tie-in to do at that little point where number two and number three meet, and I went down there and looked. And I went down there and looked at it and there's still a box trench down there and hopefully they'll get to that soon and be done with that project. So all these are over and when we get done, I'll come back with an ARPA list and give you an update of where we were on all that. Uh, got a call from Chris to go check out something at Coach Light. I went to Coach Light and I took that picture on the left. And while the ditch is clean as a whistle, yes, we have work to do there. They were complaining about it being grown up. It wasn't anything in Coach Light, but there's been so much water going through there, it's eroding the top of the bank. And we're gonna have to do something about that, Carly and Matthew. You would make a note of that, please. Put some fabric and more rock down to protect it. Ditch on the right, we've already cleaned up. Uh, we kept getting one. Matthew and I got one and it was Stony Brook and we went and walked that ditch, didn't see anything at all to mount anything, but, uh, it was called in wrong. It was on Rollingwood, really. Uh, road takes a left, goes down in there and it was right behind that patio and da-da-da-da-da-da. So we've taken care of that. This was Value Park. If you ever see a storm drain inlet like the one you see on the right that is stopped up, please let me know immediately and I'll get some shovels, hands, something, mini hoe to open that thing up. Causes a lot of flooding and when you get stopped up storm drains. I think, uh, Carly, we've already finished the, that was four or five manholes that we had to raise up four feet down there by the ditch and put another section on. Need to paint those white too, by the way. I think that was a hemp hill job. We're done with that. Uh, Bello, uh, the, now I need to know when it's 5 o'clock, when it's 5 minutes to 5 and, and board. I'll keep going when I get into public comment because there's a couple of things in here I need to get to, make you aware of. So dugout Bello again, seems like six, seven years ago we did this and it just amazes me, if you wonder where all that dirt went out of Shallow Park, it's, it's down here. So took all, all, everyone, everything you see there is willow trees. Took all that out, dug it all out. Ole sent me a text day and I didn't have time to do the math or some old dirty sand, every bit of it. Took it back down like we left it last time. Uh, and that's what's come out of that ditch. So you had about three piles that big of wood. We took out all that out here to Marquette. We'll grind it up with the rest of what's out there and go from there. So that's winding down, just about done in there and we'll get to the next one. Important one out there was there are four storm drain inlets that come into that ditch out of the subdivision. And there was so much sedimentation in there that the storm drains coming out of the subdivision were blocked. So when water hits the ground in the streets, it has nowhere to go. If the ditch gets that full and starts backing up, then it's gonna go right back up into those storm drains in the streets. This is a source of aggravation for me and, uh, Mr. Baker. And it's gonna be even more for Mr. Baker. Because Mr. Baker and Butch, uh, fixing to get, uh, Mr. Tris- Chris Trubisky with Neil Schaefer and we're gonna sit down and we're gonna make something that somebody can bid on. Because I told you last time, we were gonna be, uh, getting those tennis bids awarded by the end of the month and it ain't gonna happen. I don't see no way, shape, form, fashion it can happen. And it seems like every time something, we get two bids, that one or the other's rejected for a variety of reasons. Now, Mark can speak to that. I need him to. I'm not aggravated at him, I'm aggravated at the situation. We just can't get quotes that satisfy state law.
Well, the unfortunate thing in this case, Mayor, and this is, you know, these are all, they all have their own story and I apologize for that, but the apparent low bidder who was in the money, um, did not have a valid certificate of responsibility at the time they bid. And the law says you gotta have it. And it had expired and you can't, you can't renew it and gin it up and get it ready and make it right. In fact, you, the, the bid is invalid. There were some problems with the other bid too, but the, the real problem was the difference between the first bid, the low bid, the apparent low bidder, and the other bid was double. It was diff- between 160-some thousand and 320 thousand. So you can't just... So anyway, we're, it's back on the, it's, it's back on the rebid. It's already done, so we'll just advertise and roll on and we'll get some good numbers on that.
So there were three issues there that were complicated. One was must-go lights. That one got addressed. But it's repaying of tennis courts and pickleball and, uh, the turf. And we just, just gotta get it done and fight this for six, seven months. Frustrating. All right, let's see here. All right, so, um, I have Keppit Bay, multiple groups, uh, and now I'll submit, uh, to allow them to look at our electrical bills to come forward with you. This group on street lighting has a deal. They did this for Pearl. I think somebody else did it for Laurel. I've always been suspect of this, but, uh, the, the process of buying your street lights so that Energy does not own street lights anymore. You own them, is kinda what this is about. Replace everything with LEDs, offset of cost of what you pay to operate those lights, pays for the debt. If it's 500, 700, 900, a million, two, whatever it is. And I've agreed to allow them to assess us and come to us with a plan. Part of that plan is GIS-ing every, uh, light that's out there that, that Energy owns and at least we will have an informed decision that you can make. Now, I come at you because of the frustration with Energy. Uh, they're, you know, they're busy. I got everybody, who's not busy these days? Uh, but for us, it's problematic when we have 52 lights out, uh, in a variety of neighborhoods and we just can't get any action on it. So if we own those lights and we got 52, then we can tell somebody, "Go fix these lights." If you can't fix it, then I'll find somebody else that can. Kinda deal. Don't know if you wanna do that or not, but it's worth looking at. So we could be, uh, much more efficient in taking care of our own infrastructure if we own those. I don't know the nuances of that, but we're gonna get it down to a dollar number and a number number so that you can evaluate and decide if you wanna do that or not. All right? Good? Parallel to that, and by the way, this is Nathan, well, he's been in my office multiple times over the years. I just keep putting them off, but it's time to look at it. I get it. Uh, next group is a parallel thought, but it is not the same. This group does, uh, has tied in and knows how to use grants, for lack of a better word, or programs that Energy has to do conversions on a commercial basis. So in other words, they tell me, they believe every fire station, police station, library, perhaps maybe or not on this building because of its size, water wells and things like that that use power, you get a grant, uh, that's 80/20. We pay the 20, Energy pays the 80, and you convert everything to an LED. So if that is indeed true, I'm gonna be coming at you with, "Let's start at the library. Let's do the fire stations. Let's do the water wells. Let's begin to look at that and, and see what that plays out in some logical order." I can see where that would be an advantageous thing. You don't think about water wells using a lot of electricity, but those things trip on and run most all the day and they trip off at night when everybody goes to bed and then they come right back on like good soldiers when the sun comes up and people start moving around again. So they do use a lot of juice. Uh, let's see here. Stormwater, rain tree, all right. Somewhat of a complex. How much time do I have before I start this one? Huh? Right at what?
5:53.
5:53. All right, I can finish this and I'll finish the rest of it in public comment. So this is some pictures that I took, uh, stormwater coming between houses, uh, going down the street. I've got video of that. I don't feel like loading it with video and things like that. And we ask, uh, we wrestle with this multiple hours of multiple days to arrive at this. So that's kinda the study area, if you would. That's where the drainage comes from that goes into Rain Tree and ultimately into Old Town. I don't know how many acres it is. We could get that exactly if we wanted to. Uh, it's kinda the boundary of when water hits the ground, it's all going in that direction. Now, this is a big number, so I'm glad you're sitting down. So to begin to take out that whole line and replace it with a bigger line is a 1.1 million dollar storm drain improvement. You're going through multiple backyards. By the way, uh, Matthew believes that going back in time, that, that those backyards were an open ditch at one time and somebody had the bright idea of putting a storm drain in so I can have, put a fence up, you know, have a nice backyard and the next thing you know, the next neighbor did, next neighbor did, next neighbor did, and all of a sudden you've got a problem. Because you've got a storm drain, you've got a storm drain in an area where it wasn't designed to be a storm drain. And that's where the green and the yellow are. So, uh, you know, that's a big pill to swallow here for 12 houses. Other thing I wanna say, and Carly beats up on me about this all the time, or reminds me of it, not beats me up. Never once has there been water in the yard, uh, in a house, anywhere in Old Town or Rain Tree. Not once. Uh, everybody gets scared because of what they've seen on TV and water in the streets and that kinda thing, but, uh, you know, so that kinda balances out. You've got to think about how severe the problem is. So Matthew and I sat down and worked through this. We tried to think in terms of how can we improve this gradually, maybe, and do it in phases. And this was phase, kinda phase one, where you do something on the right, something down at the bottom at red is, uh, putting in another line, parallel to one that's already there, uh, to try to take more off the street. The next one part down would be to go up the street into Rain Tree with a bigger pipe. Uh, had to go through one street and through really three yards to make that happen. Uh, that would be another twin pipe. Matthew, am I speaking right? No? Yeah, okay. And these are big arch pipes, very expensive, very problematic, very invasive. And then the last one would be to tie in the green and yellow and that's about another $400,000. So, you know, these are just, uh, huge things and I wanna remind you of that, of stormwater. Stormwater is general fund money. That's street repaving money. So, you know, if you wanna do a big, that's a general fund. That's not enterprise fund, stormwater. Uh, cornerstone, I think I need to stop right here and we need to, uh, begin the board meeting. And I will continue that, uh, talking about another board-through water line that, uh, we're gonna have to take some action on. But, so we'll pause that right there. And we are two minutes away from a board meeting? Okay, so we, we'll pause right here, we'll conclude it and I'll continue this in just a few minutes. Get up, stretch your legs. Uh, Caleb, you good? Okay, thank you, Caleb. Caleb, everything working? Thank you, appreciate that. All right. Glad to see y'all here tonight. Uh, we were having a, uh, work session that we didn't get through with, so when we get to public comment, I'm gonna continue to work through that. I'll work through it as quick as we can. Appreciate your standing. You would, everyone stand. And we're gonna have a word of prayer by Alderman Harry Williams and a pledge by Alderman Luke Hooper. You would.
Amen and Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you've given us. Happy to be blessed with this day. Been with us tonight, Lord, in the circumstances that we look to you, our grace and our guidance. Lord, we pray for those that have been devastated lately by the storm, Lord, if you can defend them, Lord, to comfort them, that they may rebuild their lives as they do. But in the past, the next one, Lord, we know that you're in control of their lives. And we thank you for our first responders here, all the wolves who go into those areas and work, and need to watch over them. Just thank you for all that you do for us today, we're alive. We give this much things to you, and we pray for your safety.
Amen, amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Good luck with it. All right. Does anyone here this evening would like to make public comment before the board? All right. I'm getting feedback in here somehow. Caleb, I don't know how we're getting feedback. Maybe I'll push that mic a little bit further back. All right, board. We have, we all watch the, uh, national news and what's going on in, uh, in the Carolinas and Georgia, a little bit of Tennessee, a little bit of Alabama. It's horrible, we know that. And we all see what's coming toward, uh, we almost look at it these days as inevitable of what's, uh, tracking toward central Florida, the Tampa area right now. Two times, uh, we have taken a semi truck that we have and, uh, a trac- a tractor and haul goods somewhere aboard. I think, uh, we need to be making preparations to do that. Now, uh, we watched, last time it was Ida down in South Louisiana. And I can tell you how these things work. They work, uh, great. Everybody's gonna show up and you got all the help in the world for about four or five weeks and then everybody's gotta go home and there's nobody left. And I think particularly in the Carolinas, I think food is gonna be an issue. You need to feed people that are working. And no telling what's gonna happen in Florida. So you can just imagine in the state of Florida, all your resources have gone to help the first hurricane in that area, and you're gonna get hit again. So we've got an opportunity to take goods to help someone, somewhere. We've got two or three people, some great senators we can call, and congressmen that can help guide us where we need to go. Uh, Samaritan's Purse is one that I'd be partial to, but I'd listen to anybody. And board, I just kind of wanted, wanted to hear from you, let you make a comment or two. You think we need to make an effort, I would take that semi down to the police station or out here in front of City Hall as we've done before, and try to start compiling goods to haul somewhere to someone to try to do our part. Lord knows, I can tell you, in 2005, when Katrina was here, there were people, firefighters, that came down from New York to help us here in Mississippi. We'll always appreciate that. But there are people out there, but that goodwill will run out at some point in time. People have lives to leave and that kind of thing. So, uh, if you're agreeable to that, I'll work it out. We'll begin to figure out some way. I'd like to put a, I got the chief to give me some idea of what one of our logos would look like on the side of that semi, so that everywhere it goes, that people know us from Brandon, Mississippi. If you're inclined to let us move with that, we'll turn it into a mayor's youth council thing, and we'll load that thing and get it somewhere that can help somebody.
I think that's a good idea, and I think Samaritan's Purse is a really good organization. I agree, and to have it, we get feedback to, have it here at City Hall like we've done before. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, the, uh, only thing about City Hall is, which we can move it, but, uh, you know, this place is used a lot, but we'll work it out. The idea, we'll, I'll figure it out. If you're in agreement, I'm on it. Let's do it. Okay. All right, board, I'm gonna go forward and knock out the rest of these items on this work session that we weren't able to cover. Uh, I want to send out a shout out to Ms. Felicia who called. This was on a, uh, I guess, was it a Thursday evening? Thursday night, said, "I don't have any water." Now, we get those calls a lot when we have a break or something like that, but this is a relatively new area of Cornerstone, Phase 11. Get out there, and you got water going everywhere, and somebody's bored through a line. And that's one of the first pictures that came out of that. So Felicia, thank you. It always helps getting phone calls, and it just kept going. So this is a brand new 10-inch water main that a boring company had bored through. And board, it's a problem. We're gonna have to get their insurance company here. We're gonna have to evaluate this, because it's basically gonna be digging up a whole intersection of a new street to get down to the problem, to fix it and bring it back up. Put that picture in here to say, that yellow area that you see on the right, there was a permit pull for that area, but that intersection that you see there that is pointing at, there was no, they didn't call 811, they didn't have a permit to bore. And in that area, right there in that street, is where they hit a 10-inch water line. So, uh, my belief is, you better get in and take out the whole section of pipe. My hairline crack could go on, and you could be dealing with something from now on and fixing it right. Uh, and we need to take care of that. Uh, I went out on Friday, this was before noon, and took that picture on the right, and it was clear. They were boring everywhere to the left, just doing whatever they want to do without any flags or anything else. So, Mark, you want to add anymore to this? Till we, uh, we're gonna call their insurance company and get them on site, let them know what we're doing as we begin to open this up. It's gonna be an expensive repair, because you're gonna have to dig up an intersection and a new subdivision and fix it.
Mayor, I don't, I just think we're, you know, this seems like it's happening more and more, so we just need to make sure that we, we're stepping, like you're doing, and everything. But before we do the work on this, we need to make sure that we've given the, uh, boring company, whoever did it, whoever broke it, given them an opportunity to come see what we're fixing to do. Um, you know, it's just kind of part of making the claim. Lou would tell you that as well. It's hard for them to say they didn't know, and they, that you went too far or did whatever if they didn't get the, if they've given the opportunity and didn't take advantage of it. So we need to definitely make sure about that, and obviously do what we've got to do to get it fixed.
All right, so when we reach that point, board, there's no one living on those new lines yet, but it is inhibiting the development of it. Uh, I don't, I think everybody has water, Carly. So it's not an emergency situation as far as that concerns, so we got some time to play with it. So we'll get on the horn ASAP and get someone from their insurance carrier out here and take appropriate action. You've got a major decision coming before you, board. I gave you some handouts on this. The Department of Health reached out to us a few months back, and we've just been trying to get through our budget and all of that. To fluorinate or not to fluorinate is the question of the day. And you have a single-page document from Water Solutions. This comes from the water operators that we have here, and they created it. I need you to pause and think. The health department is gonna be here in two weeks. They want to address you and address the community about their desire that you fluorinate. Uh, currently, today, right now, our equipment is old, outdated, hadn't been working for a number of months. We have not been putting fluoride in the water. For those of you that are chemistry people, fluoride is a salt, disassociates in water, and you get elemental fluorine. Of course, fluorine is attracted calcium, and that's, uh, the dentists are gonna be here, the world's gonna tell you the history of that. And I would encourage you to get online, and you will see a lot of data. It's actually going to the Supreme Court that fluoride should not be put in water, that in today's time, you've got enough fluorine that you can get in mouthwash and toothpaste and a variety of other places that you shouldn't have to do that. Now, if you look at that single page I gave you, you will see that there is annual cost down at the bottom, looking at Lou's here, and you've got installation costs of those, uh, the pumps and everything's gotta go in it. But the bottom number there is a perpetual number, every year. And it's a big decision for you to make. Yes, you see the bottom number? Yeah. That's an annual outlet, every month. That's $12,000 a month. You know, this type thing, you don't want, uh, you don't want it going to be okay if it went low, but you certainly don't want it going high, you know? Too many negative health effects from that. So it's something for you to study and think about. I gave you an article with a few things in there, and there is a lawsuit going forward to the Supreme Court. Another thing I gave you was Mississippi law, was the other big handout I gave you. It is not a state requirement. Uh, the state wants you to do it. I can tell you the Department of Health's gonna come in here and ask that you do it, recommend that you do it, but it is not mandated in the law. So, uh, there are many, uh, water jurisdictions that don't do it. So it's gonna take some study on your behalf. Uh, I would say, listen in two weeks to the Department of Health and whoever they bring in here with them, to listen to them, and do some outside reading. And I will try to get some additional data for you to study and read as well. But it's gonna have to be a decision, yea or nay. Uh, I'd say, get to November. We need to know. You know, the public needs to know. Big decision. All right, here's another problem for me and you. Uh, Old Brandon Cemetery. I think everybody in this room has probably been in that cemetery at some point in time. Uh, we had a lady that called and said, "Well, you know, whoever y'all got taking care of the cemetery doing the mowing, they're not taking care of all these graves that have been here behind my house." So I send somebody, and they snap a couple of pictures, and there's enough for me, big red lights. I go look. And we sit down and begin talking about this with Matthew and Carly. And the pictures I'm gonna show you are gonna be a little bit disturbing, but I want you to understand where we're coming from. So this is 2021. If you look right down at the bottom across there, and Matthew's gonna subscribe to this website so we can get good, clear pictures. But I would say, I'm gonna show you 2021. I'm gonna show you 1980, and I'm gonna show you 1960. So you're gonna see pictures from 60 years ago. And Mother Nature just knows to grow plants and trees and all this kind of stuff. And I'm gonna show you what I believe to be 20 to 30 or more graves that are in the woods that have been unkept for a long time. And one of them scared the living snot out of me the other day. So there's 1980. You look down at the bottom of that page, see a pretty clear line across there. But when you look at 1960, you see the line between, if you look at copyright material right in the middle, that is Wooton's Hollow. And you've got five houses that are there that butt up to an old chain link fence that's still there, it's collapsed. But if you see all those white dots in that area right there, all those white dots are graves that, that the trees and undergrowth, and I'm not talking, you know, Matthew, when I spoke to Matthew about it, he said, "Well, can't you get a weed eater and with a blade on it and just go through there and clean them all up?" No. Some of these are six and eight-inch trees. Some of these are oak trees that are 42 inches across. One of these, I had an, one of the inmates with me that stepped by a root and went down in a hole, which I am 100% believe it was a grave. And he went down to his thigh in that hole. So all I know to do is get, start cleaning down to that fence row and figure out some way to get that stuff out of there. And the only way I see to get it out of there is carry it over to 471. I can't see going back through the cemetery. I can't see going through Wooton's Hollow. Can't, I just, I can't see any of that. And there's no other way to get out of there. So you're gonna have to start over close to 471 and start taking it out that way. Uh, it's gonna be expensive. My, uh, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be a bid-type project. I'd like to try to get some bids on it, work with Matthew to come up with something. Um, but it's spooky. And the reason why it's spooky is things like this. So you find some tombstones that are broken into three pieces. You find them that it's just like time took them away. Nobody cared about them to maintain them or anything else. And I know the Brandon Garden Club and Historical Society have GISed all of their known graves and what's, uh, in the area that's being mowed and kept up now, but they don't know about these. This one in particular, Frank Hobson, World War I. He was a private quartermaster corps. Died, you know, October 10th of 1947. And that's down there, just unkept, out of sight, out of mind. And we need to figure this out, you know? There, I'm one, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room, I know Marcus is, care about history. There are a lot of people in Rankin County that care about history of what was, what is, because it led us to where we are today. But that's an important thing that we need to capture. All right. So that's enough of the cemetery. I'm gonna be coming at you with some kind of plan to clean that fence row up and reestablish that fence and, and make it as it should be. You know, you don't respect today, I, there's no adage out there somewhere. You can gauge the quality of community you live in by how well they keep their cemetery. And I think that's, that parallels how, uh, how you keep your public buildings and your public infrastructure. So we're gonna, we're gonna take care of that. So that is, the yellow line you see on there is Tamberlin. Now, Tamberlin is cut off. You see the X on there. You get into Tamberlin on that end by off of Highway 80 there, across from Wendy's. And the other end of Tamberlin goes down by Brandy Discount Drugs and goes in. The church you see there, which on the agenda tonight, I think, there's, there is a, uh, let's see here. Where was that on the church? To recognize the church. Where? I don't see it on, huh? Proclamation for Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church. So if you look at it, that's right there in the middle of that page. The front of that church faces Tamberlin. This is, this predates Highway 80 being built. That's how long that church has been there. And if you look at their documentation, they didn't have a church. They met with a Methodist church first, until they could buy property. And buying property, yes, they bought that property, which we know today is 16-section, but it wasn't 16-section back in that day. They bought that property and built a church on Tamberlin. And I would propose to you that we need to put a project together and look at tying in both ends of Tamberlin so that those folks don't have to jump out into traffic down here on Highway 80, and they can safely get out of there, uh, and just make it better for everybody. So I'd like to put a project together and do that.
Did you know the bus, the kids in it, down on Tamberlin, they walk up in front of the church to get on the bus?
And garbage goes up there, and something gets in the garbage. You got garbage all over Highway 80. It's just, it's unsafe doing that. So I think it's a nice project, a nice improvement, uh, respectful of the church, and we need to do that. So I'm gonna be working on that with Matthew, and we'll come up with some plans. You got a street on both ends, just need to get them tied together again. All right, board, thank you for your patience in that. I know that's a lot. Uh, and we will get on with our work session, I mean, our board meeting. All right. Yep, I just need that proclamation in hand. And Mary Ann, do you have that proclamation handy? I need to read some of it, please. All right, board. Presented to the Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church. Whereas on September 29th, 2024, marks the 155th anniversary of the founding of Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church located in historic downtown Brandon. Whereas in 1869, a small group of men and women with newfound freedom began their prayer meetings in Jones Quarters. The congregation continued to flourish and selected Reverend Silas Brown as their first pastor. And whereas despite obstacles, the congregation grew larger, allowing for the move to the courthouse and owned a shared worship space with a newly established Methodist church. Whereas after overcoming much hardship and with a vision, the congregation purchased a land located on Tamberlin Street that would be the location to establish their first Baptist church in Rankin County and erected a humble wooden church. Whereas the Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church has continued to advance and grow over the years. Its members being blessed to move into its current church home in 1961. And whereas on this commemoration of the 155th anniversary, Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church remains as committed today as it was in 1869, to continue nurturing the faith of its members and to share the gospel message to our surrounding communities. Now, therefore, I butch Lee, Mayor of the City of Brandon, hereby honor the 155th anniversary of Rockstar Missionary Baptist Church, and in witness thereof, have hereunto set on my hand and cause for the seal of the City of Brandon to be affixed to this 29th day of September 2024. So that was presented to their congregation on Sunday morning. Hello, board. Uh, make you a copy of that if you'd like to have it, and we'll get it to you. All right. Thank you for your patience, board, and we will work on through the agenda. All right. Old Business approved the work session and regular board meeting amendments of September 23rd, 2024. Motion to adjourn, Womack. Second motion, Jerry Crane. Any comment on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Working through the mayor, I'll take these five together. I may strike, have to strike one. I believe we're gonna have to pull one of them. That's true. Okay. Number one, consideration to amend a water utility easement from Trustmark National Bank for work related to the improvements regarding the road to the newly acquired energy property. The original easement was adopted on July 15th, 2024. Board, that's what you see, the work going on the other side of, uh, Trustmark Bank between there. Reason why we want to do that is to get under the new street that's being built. We ultimately, I want to, that's another work session thing. I want to, we need to loop our water mains around behind this building and tie that in. Uh, so that's one thing going on there that we need to get to work on. Number two, approve a professional services agreement with SST HR Consulting to provide employment, locate services to fill the position of an accounts payable specialist for the city upon the same terms and conditions as previously retained for other employment searches, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute same. Number three, consideration to make salary corrections for individuals who were inadvertently missed during the budget as part of the attached spreadsheet, and the finance director is authorized to make the necessary budget amendments. Board, as we worked through that with individual people, we found one water department problem. We found that there was a miscalculation from the police department for dispatchers, and we wanted to correct all of that for all of them. There were two in public works, and I think that was about the summation of it. But all the rest of it was straightened out, and we got everybody, that's the purpose of going through on an individual basis, to make sure we find those things. Number four, consideration to approve a quote, a quote from Murphy's Lawn and Landscape Incorporated as professional services contractor renovating clean city halls, planning beds in the front parking lot, and authorize mayor to execute same. I think there's, everybody in this room would agree they need. And I appreciate the work. So Ryan has a group of people that are available now. Did a good job in downtown, did a good job taking down trees, did a good job on Crake Murles, did a good job on Crossgate's Lake, and it's just, uh, helpful to have people that are willing to work. And number five, request person to, uh, he wants to take this one out. Board, what I'm trying to do, Dwight and board, is to, on the Board, what I'm trying to do, Dwight and board, is to, on the next board meeting, I'll have two, uh, good quotes on the same trailer, they don't match up well enough, uh, but that is to store what we call bicycle rack, uh, the crowd control racks, and we'll have both of those on the next agenda. That's right. We'll have, we'll have the trailer and the bike racks next time, okay? So you're taking one through four, board. Is there a motion to approve one through four? Comments or questions? To approve? Mr. David Ferris, is there a second? Second, Miss Sharon Womack. Is any comment on those, board?
I want to say one thing, Mary. Trustmark was, has been easy to work with on this from the get. I just wanted to say that. It doesn't always happen that way, but it was just quick, really quick and really easy, and even on the corrective side.
Thank you. Um, board, from, on Highway eighty, we've had four water leaks on Highway eighty, and it's a project that's gonna be coming to you. I wish it was already here yesterday. Starting back up here, probably at either Marquette Road or by Community Bank, that intersection, that where we settle on. We've had four water leaks out here in the front of City Hall, which impacts these restaurants, which impacts City Hall, which impacts the police department, which impacts dispatch, and we feel like it's just bored through rocks and everything else and not a good line. So we want to replace that line, and that's part of what that water line is doing there. So we want to improve our, uh, utility structure around City Hall, around every, all these businesses, and what's about to happen next door to us. All right, enough babbling from me. Uh, yes, sir.
I had a question. I was just gonna make a comment about number four, um, and you said they're doing a good job. Could we get somebody to help us or even look at kind of addressing some of this right away, couldn't?
Yeah, what we, uh, you know, on the highways, we have David Quarian is doing it, um...
Could you have somebody to go out and look at four sixty-eight and just look at every entrance to, like, um, Arbor Hill Drive, Pine Lawn, Brenmore, like, look like it hadn't been done all year?
Uh, yes, and it hasn't, and Rod and his crew, I've seen three tractors outrun at the same time. We need a side cutter in a bad kind of way. To use a side cutter, we need an operator. But yes, we can do that. David Quarian can cut it. The, uh, board, all, every one of you, if you would send me, if you see something, Luckney Road is a good example, uh, West Sunset is another one. If you just send me something that pops in your mind that we need a side cutter on to get to, I'll be glad, we'll put a project together that is specific and get bids on it.
Cut around the, uh, stop signs, it's just grown up. It's ridiculous.
Well, I want, I hear you, ridiculous. You gotta be careful, though, you get, your people are working their tails off. I mean, there's only, you only got so many hands, um, we've had a five million dollar street research and plan going on, that's where your people have gone. Well, you sit there and shake your head, but they gotta do the digouts in front of all that, you know, and hopefully we're coming to the end of that. So, uh, and you see, that's part of the purpose of doing these work sessions, is show you the, the amount of work that they're doing. I don't disagree with you. Uh, it's like ditch on rolling wood, you know, that person's property goes to the middle of that ditch. That person could easily take care of that ditch if he doesn't want to. And I see the same thing you see. I see a fire hydrant weeds around it, uh, and across the street from the Kia dealership, brand new dealership, brand new business, and we need to be keeping it up cleaner than that. So ideally, what we want is a crew that that's all they do, is move around. So I'm kind of glad we're having this conversation right now. So I tried to recruit a young man, uh, last week to go to work for the city, uh, that I thought would be a good employee, and I asked him how much he made last year and all this kind of stuff he's gotten in the floors, talk about can't find people to go to work. And he's knocking down a hundred thousand dollars, but he's usually got two people working with him. I don't know how much he's paying them, so he's just very honest with me. He said it's gonna take about eighty thousand dollars getting me to come to work for you, and that would be what I would classify as laborer two. I could, we could make it work with a laborer three, but you're not at eighty thousand, though. But that's, I, that's the same thing we've been through in our discussion, we talked about increases for salary and take care of our people. To get the kind of person you need to run that crew is an eighty or ninety thousand What's your budget at the airport for keeping? What's your budget at the airport for keeping mowing and trees trimmed and all that kind of thing? Well, I just, okay, I understand, I don't disagree with you. Uh, I fall into the Leland Speed. Leland Speed did a speech on the coast one time in Jackson County, and he called it the fourth flag. And it's, uh, flags, fixtures, fauna, and fellowship is what makes a community, and I believe that. Lot to be said for that. All right. Thank you for those comments, though, and yes, so if you see something specific, let me know, please, and I'll get to it. All right, we got a motion, a second, any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right, Miss Mary Ann. You wanna try to do all ten, or you got any problems in here?
I feel like they're pretty straightforward, but I'll be happy to split them.
That's all right. If there's a question, we'll, we'll address it.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill fifteen twenty-one and other law for and related purposes, authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures. Kids Bob Kids Live Nation sell-off agreement, Brandon Amphitheater nine sixteen twenty-four, and Brian Martin Artist Agreement, City Hall Live twenty twenty-four. Number two, consideration of rejecting the two bids received for the tennis rehab project since neither bid met the bid's requirements and authorizing the re-advertising of the project. Number three, consideration to authorize payment to Logic Software annual maintenance and support in the amount of ten thousand six thirty-eight. Consideration of the approval of a standard plan quote from Archive Social in order to come into compliance with the requirements of the Mississippi Public Records Act. The first year of the contract will be in the amount of six thousand three ninety-one. Consideration to amend the current pest control service agreement with David Jeffcoat Pest Control to include the city shop service to include quarterly service to the inside, outside, and perimeter of the building. This cost is seventy-five dollars per quarter or three hundred dollars per year. Request permission to authorize the mayor to execute this amendment and all related documents. Consideration to approve the twenty twenty-four sixteenth section lease payment, sixteen dash five dash three IBJ dash fifty-two, in the amount of five thousand one sixty-one forty-two. The annual lease begins on ten one twenty-four. Request permission to surplus approximately two hundred and nine broken concert chairs and authorize the sale of the same on Gov deals as they are no longer of use to the city with all proceeds going back to the two percent fund. Consideration to accept the municipal compliance questionnaire for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the same. Consideration to hold a flu shock clinic for city personnel on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at City Hall. Consideration for city clerk Mary Ann Hess, deputy clerk Rebecca Peavy, and deputy clerk Camden Sunley to attend election training at the winter MMCCA conference at the Sheraton Refuge Center in Flowood, Mississippi on December eleventh through thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Consideration to approve claim stock it for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, September thirtieth. Claim stock it for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, October fourth, post-close. Claim stock it for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, October seventh.
Marcus has a question.
Okay, Mark.
The memo, uh, first, the, we didn't get the revised agreement from Jeffcoat, so the agreement's got things in there we can't agree to, so if it's the board, board wants to go ahead and approve that, we're just subject to the modifications by the city attorney. Second thing is, the memo for the chair says a hundred and seventy-four.
The correct number is two oh nine.
Okay, so that'd be a revised...
So we need to correct and revise the memo.
Okay.
And board, you know, some of those chairs are seven and eight years old, and, uh, people stand up in them and bust them.
They do.
Every show.
Are we replacing them with a time-out chair, or are we replacing...
No, we don't want to replace them with a more expensive chair, because they'll tear them up, too.
Well, we're replacing them with a...
I can't, yeah. Uh, I tell you what, by the next board meeting, I'll have a cost of what the chair is. I'll have a cost of the two types of chairs we have out there, the cushion chairs, uh, that are in the boxes are about eighty bucks a pop. Oh, well, Mr. Vincent's in that business. My whole, all right, so we'll have a, I mean, you, you getting in, you talk about a lot of money.
I know, the cushions are not perfect, they were, they weren't chairs out of there, just, you know, so like, it doesn't matter to me, it was like...
Well, that's because they, yeah, what I, some of that is the, we use inmate labor to do that work, and they don't pay attention to the chairs like anybody else would, so they're putting out broken chairs. So when you put a broken one out, you don't weed it out of the system, so... But I'll listen to Mr. Vincent there, he can give us some recommendations, uh, on No, I know you were, but you...
So we'll look to, so we'll look to purchase chairs every concert season?
No, I bet, we've been limping along, we've been taking them back and forth, we use the same ones over there, over here, and we truck them back and forth, we're trying to get to where these are standalone, where they don't stay out in the weather. Manufacturer also recommends that they don't stay out in the sunshine. Well, that's great. If you got a show on Thursday one week and a show the next Friday, there's no sense in, on the labor side, of picking everything up and putting everything back out, that number of chairs. So they stay out in the weather, catch a lot of sunshine. So it's just like plastic or anything else, it's the bottoms of them that's going out. Right. And we've had them, you know, we've been weeding them off, some are eight years, some of those are seven and eight years old. That's right. All right, good conversation. Like to have those kind of conversations. So, Miss Mary Ann, if you would, make a note that I need to have chair, just for examples, and we can talk about that in a work session, too, get some examples of it. All right? Any other questions on those eleven issues? There a motion to approve those eleven issues from the clerk?
Subject to the revision of the memo by the city attorney?
Has that been discussed with you? Was it a revision?
Yeah, I thought Jeffcoat, you gave me the information, I was supposed to get it back to Rebecca.
They did call me this afternoon, but it was late, like three-thirty or four today.
Yeah, that was great, it was fun.
They were okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, and then binding arbitration, waiver of jury trial, and that's, I mean, it's been a... So this is every time, well, it's been...
Motion by Miss Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Lou Coker. Thank you. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board.
It's a lot.
Brian, Brian. Mark says you need that. Thank you. All right, Carly, your voice holds out.
I can try.
If I hear a crack, if you hear, I hear a crack one time, I'm gonna start talking, okay?
That's fine. Yeah, y'all bear with me.
She's fighting Goldenrod, right?
How do you want me to take these? Please don't say all of them.
Well, Mark said, yeah.
Man, I don't know if I'll hold out that long.
Can you make it through five? Can you make it through number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's give it a go.
One through five.
All right, number one, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill Construction Company for ER repairs in the months of July, August, and September twenty twenty-four. At the FY twenty-four General Construction Service commodity bid pricing and authorized payment of the same. Number one was at sixty-one Sunline Drive ER sewer repair in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Number two, sixty-one Terrific Cove ER sewer repair, eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents. Number three, seventy-six Pine Cove ER sewer repair, seven thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Number four, one oh one Deborah Drive ER sewer repair, five thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Number five, near two oh one North Street, an ER water leak repair, six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Number six, three oh eight Brenmore Drive ER sewer repair, six thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Number seven, near five twenty-six and five thirty-two East Jasper Street ER water leak repair, six thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. Number eight, six oh six West Sunset Drive ER sewer repair, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-five cents. Number nine, uh, ten seventy-five Center Point Drive ER sewer repair, twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Number ten, four thirty-nine Greenfield Ridge Circle ER sewer repair, six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Uh, number eleven, Greystone Court near Woodstone Road ER water leak repair, five thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Number twelve, Harold Street ER sewer repair, thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Number thirteen, Lewis Wilson Drive near Kennedy Farm Parkway ER sewer issue, five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Item number two, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill Construction Company for Hunter's Wood Sewer Repair Project, Group Two of Six. Um, authorized payment of the same and amend the budget accordingly. Uh, the board approved these, um, to be done on May the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Number one, near eleven Terrific Hill Road South, uh, twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents due to a utility board. Number two, near fifteen Terrific Hill Road South, six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Item number three, consideration to approve pay request three in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and two dollars and thirty-nine cents from Simmons Erosion Control for the twenty twenty-four East Gate Sidewalk Project and authorized payment of the same. Number four, consideration to approve pay request eight in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand eighty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Highway eighty signal improvements project, Stone Gate and Wood Gate and authorized payment of the same. And number five, consideration to approve the following from Simmons Erosion Control for the Mary Ann Sidewalk Improvements Project. Number one, pay request three final in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents and authorized payment of the same. This includes the final summary change order. And number two, the approval of the final summary change order at a decrease in the project cost of four thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
That's golden.
No, yeah, don't ask me to repeat any of that.
That golden, Goldenrod's tough, isn't it?
Man.
I'm going slow. Board, is there a motion to approve one through five? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Is there a second? Second by, who said that? Miss Sharon Womack? All in favor, say aye. Trying to buy Carly some time. All opposed, like that? All right, Miss Carly.
All right, ready?
She's trying to be a trooper here, all right.
It's all good.
All good. Six through thirteen.
All right, number six, consideration to approve the following regarding the Morrow Or Drainage Improvements Project. Number one, rescind item seven point... Number one, rescind item seven point five from the September twenty-third board meeting due to bond requirements required on the projects over twenty-five thousand dollars. Number two, reject all bids received on September thirteenth due to bond requirements as required on projects over twenty-five thousand. And number three, permission to re-advertize for quotes for the Morrow or Drainage Improvements Project. Item seven, consideration to accept the letter of resignation from Wesley Riles Labor Two and Public Works Department effective October fifteenth. Number eight, consideration to approve utility adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo. Number nine, consideration to award the bid in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars to Hemp Hill Construction Company as the best and lowest bid received for the Dining Point St., Coin Dexter New Parking Lot Project. Number ten, consideration to approve the MOU between the City of Brandon Board of Alderman and Mayor of Wychley in regard to the MDQ Agreement five four six dash two dash CW five point five and authorized execution of the same. This agreement is funding for the Lance Martin East Haven Rehabilitation Project. Number eleven, consideration to approve the MOU between the City of Brandon Board of Alderman and Mayor of Wychley in regard to the MDQ Agreement five eight dash two dash CW dash five point five and authorized execution of the same. This agreement is funding for the Highway eighteen, Highway four sixty-eight Sewer Force Main Replacement Project. Number twelve, consideration to approve the revised agreement with Langford Water Association for Sewer Fee Collections to update the same in accordance with applicable law and supersede and replace the existing two agreements and authorize the mayor to execute the same. And number thirteen, consideration to approve and award the FY twenty-five commodity bid prices pursuant to the memo. And number twelve was the add-on we had, Mark.
Number twelve, right, the Langford Agreement, we have an agreement in place, there were some minor tweaks in the law, and we added another um customer or another, another set of customers, the Nauder Building. It's probably going on City Sewer, so we needed to make sure we had a collection agreement in place for them and a fire flow agreement. And so this will just keep us from having to do future agreements with regard to certificated area for, for Langford. We'll come back and have to present one for Taylorsville and for Greenfield at the appropriate time, we're just not there yet.
Alright. Six through thirteen, is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams. Second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got three items, I need to strike the first one. That's not ironed out yet.
Should we be striking the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Number two, I'm gonna take two and three individually. Number two, consideration to approve travel to Natchez, Mississippi for Randy Barnes and Jesse Green to attend the Building Officials Association of Mississippi Winter Conference from December fourth through sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Harry Williams, second by Lou Coker, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you.
Number three, consideration to approve a development review application for Gil, for Gilreath Construction to be built on Tanglewood Drive, parcel number I nine B dash twelve.
No.
It was on the agenda.
We came at you with the idea of what was coming.
I don't believe there's, I don't believe there's a representative here to speak for him. Um, I know that's why we postponed it last time, but.
Say on, on the staff recommendations, because that's been gone over with, with Gilreath?
Mm-hmm, it has.
And they are in agreement with all of these recommendations?
What they were wanting to do is to do a gravel parking lot, which our development ordinance does not allow. Um, they had, they had some concerns about the uh condition of the road, Tanglewood, which as I understand is a private road. Um, but they were basically asking if we would come in and help and do some work on Tanglewood so they could tie their curb and gutter from their parking lot or their apron to the road, and it wouldn't be as big of a mess. But I told them that that wasn't our responsibility.
What about all these other, because there's a whole list of recommendations?
Right, and that's something that Matthew Miller and myself uh put together. Uh, one of them was that they wanted us to agree to connect to the sewer underneath um four seventy-one. I mentioned that that needed to go before y'all, uh, but Matthew and I both were in agreement that they needed to do some further investigation and due diligence on existing infrastructure. Uh, you know, contextual infrastructure, and they needed to figure out if there was not a better option as far as where to tie in sewer. I, we are under the impression that there is another, a better option than going under four seventy-one.
So if we approve this tonight?
It's contingent on those things being addressed.
It is contingent on these things being addressed.
And so something that we've started doing in our development ordinance, a lot of times people are required to have a lot of plans, you know? Um, and I've seen people put, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars in plans and then a project not get approved. And so what we've started doing is trying to be a little bit more business friendly. Um, requiring, requiring a little less on the front end and saying, we're gonna give contingent approval if you handle these things, so. But generally, I think it's a good project, I just think that they need to follow the development ordinance. Meaning curb and gutter, photometrics, lights, uh paved parking lot, um, you know, all the requirements. It's kind of a, it's kind of a, a mess. Um, you know, it's, um, this is on the south. Right, right. That's right. So it's. That's right. That's right. Basically, our recommendation is that if they meet all the uh development standards, that we approve it, which that's what's listed out in staff recommendations there.
Alright. What you getting about? Well, you're treating.
I agree for our ordinances, but I think the thing is kind of weird to me is, is we're forcing things to do things down there that, that road's a mess.
Yes, sir.
You know, and you, we've gone there and jumped on them and said, this is what you gotta do, and I mean, I just, I, I don't know, I just, it's just my opinion, I mean, I know some people don't agree with it, but the, the road's a utter mess.
Well, but Harry, the thing about it is, it faces the new four seventy-one.
That's right.
I mean, even though the access is there, everybody that drives on four seventy-one is going to.
Yeah, and I mean, this is what we require of everyone that does a commercial development. Everywhere citywide. My thoughts are that if they go to do a project, and I mean, you know, I mean, we're willing to compromise with them uh where it helps them, but, you know, uh, we require everybody to put curb and gutter on a parking lot, you know? And we would hope that that development there would be a catalyst to turn any future projects there on Tanglewood around, you know? It's raising the bar. I don't, Mr. Gilreath does. Rock Gilreath, Gilreath Construction.
It's a search for property. It's a search for something that you can build on, um, like East Mart Drive. There's just limited places where you could put something like that. I remember Jeff Martella had it listed at one time. On the other side of the highway.
Correct. There's a rental house back there. Alright, so. Do you want something like that facing four seventy-one, or are you looking at the back of the building, you're looking at the front of the building?
Be the back.
Parking in the front?
Sorry, parking are, will be around the whole building. You'd be looking at the back of the building, and that's something that I spoke with him about, he's gonna do a facade that would be suitable. It'll take a parapet wall there. Well, this is a site approval. This is the general development, this is not ARB, so we haven't gotten that far yet. He is aware, they are aware of it, yes. So we would do the building after this. See what I mean?
Is there a list of those particular things that you think you need to bring to that?
That'd be the next step. What I'm trying to say is, we approve this general development. I don't want them to come out of pocket and pay for building designs prior to the development being approved, you know? Because it's just out of pocket costs, we're trying to be more business friendly.
Okay?
I agree, hundred percent.
That's right.
Alright. Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Lou Coker. Any further comment or question? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, boy. Thank you, Sam. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd have my uh monthly report for September. So in the month of September, the Brandon Police Department responded to one thousand seven hundred and ninety calls for service, uh seventy-two motor vehicle wrecks. The officers completed one hundred and sixty-three incident supplemental reports, made six hundred and sixty-five traffic stops, made forty-three arrests, and the inmate crews picked up two hundred and fifty-one bags of trash throughout the city. So again, we're, we're staying busy over there at the police department, and the officers are very proactive. Two fifty-one. So uh tonight I've got three items, and if I could take them together.
Yes, sir.
Alright, the first one is to accept the resignation of Joseph Branch as a patrolman for the City of Brandon effective September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Uh, number two, request permission for Chief Joseph Branch to travel to Oxford, Mississippi to participate in the twenty twenty-four Midyear Chiefs Conference on December ninth through thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. And the third, request permission to hire Tammy Hudson as a police officer for the City of Brandon Police Department instead of rate of pay in accordance with the memo. And Tammy is back here. And uh after uh the meeting tonight, I'd like, sir, if you would, swear in uh Tammy and Officer Beaman, who's present here also.
Alright, we'll do that uh before we go into executive session.
Alright.
Alright, great. Alright, is there a motion to approve those three items? Who said what? Crane and Womack? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Last one, we're getting there.
Yes, sir.
Just about. I want to start off with our monthly report. We had one weather sirens that did not work, it was the Greenbrook location. Power has been connected to it, uh, as of recently, we're trying to get the technician back out here to figure out what's wrong with it at this point in time. Pafford had a hundred and sixty-eight priority one, priority one runs with average response time of nine minutes and twenty-eight seconds. Fire Department, Brandon Fire Department had a, in the month of September, had a total of two hundred and forty-seven calls, with average response, response time about five and a half minutes. We had nine fire calls, a hundred and sixty-eight DMS calls, six wrecks, and sixty-four is other. We had six hundred and forty training hours, but we conducted twenty-six building inspections and had six hours of public education. Permission to take the other three together, sir?
Yes, sir.
Request your consideration to purchase equipment from the Homeland Security Grant twenty, of twenty twenty-four. Item number two is a question, consideration to apply for the FY twenty-five Emergency Medical Service Operating Funds Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and authorize the mayor and the finance director to execute all related documents. Item number three is a quest, consideration to approve invoice number seven one three two dash two four dash three six two from Joe Goodard Enterprise LLC in the amount of six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars as the emergency repairs to some of our outdoor warning sirens and authorized the payment of the same. We found this gentleman, he does a lot of work in the area, he's Marcusoff, does great work, very thorough, very impressed with him. Like I said, and things are expensive to fix these days.
Alright. Mr. Baker have something?
Okay, so, th- this is happening a lot, I'm, I'm trying to get everybody on line, I'm trying to make sure I'm, I'm understanding. You, the, the, item one is just to purchase equipment?
Yes, sir. But it's the grant equipment that we gotta purchase, and then we get reimbursed for it.
Is that the, is that the twenty thousand four hundred, twenty thousand two hundred and four dollars from RPT, which is the lowest in base?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the memo item.
I apologize, I'd, I'm a memo, look at it. But that sounds a hundred percent correct.
Is that it? Alright, is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane. Second by Dwight Middleton. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Board at this time, I'd like to take a vote to determine the necessity of being in executive session, and uh like to swear in these two officers before we leave. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. I heard that enthusiasm, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign? Alright, chief. All right, chief.